I just thought people would see this. I've never heard of math solvers whatsoever. I've never found it convenient. I mean, I try to study so hard every time I saw the math in space. And I'm happy to help the kids who enjoy to write their stuff. It translates into print, into the box of motion for every step I take.
So I heard you went through it too. I saw the video.
Okay.
So.
I saw it.
Did you hear anything about PC?
She was reaching out.
We're on. We're on. I just wanted to show you that we know. I know we got the new administration that's put work to pieces in Billy here. Got them to look at us and like that.
Right. You guys must be too much.
Yeah. The whole review.
Yeah.
Your force starts here.
I don't care.
I just print out the teacher not let it. I'll be the first one here.
It did that back.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to get a lot of it.
This one, yeah, it's kind of like you got to build it back up from that standpoint. And then the, like you said, the extraneous program.
But that's the thing. See, we have these offices. Now, they're not going to. It makes that work easier. Which has, it just doesn't do. The problem is that they don't see a lot of, you know, to, like, people. Yeah. So, my. What they see is this.
Oh, yeah.
These kids are straight. Yeah, that's it. All right. But it would make, I think it would make sense. I think you would see, I think you would see the, the board program. They had already, I had several of those guys. Yeah, there were a lot of good things. I remember.
And it. I'm looking at your friend. 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 Yeah, there were a lot of good things. I remember. And it. I'm looking at your friend. 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 I mean, I don't know if it's. But not as far as one of them. I didn't know. So. I don't know. 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 Yes. Hello. We're actually. I'm here. 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 Yeah. Well, yeah. Yeah. I think my first job. I think. 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 I think.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand in front of the pleasure allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may have a seat. And we welcome you to our March 20th school board meeting. There is a sheet for you to sign in if you'd like to address the board at the end of the meeting. Mrs. Novak, is it with you or is it in the back? It's in the back. And we welcome you to the Lake Central School Corporation meeting where it is our goal to develop self-directed learners and contributing and responsible members of our society. So, school board members, is there anyone that did not receive their electronic packet version of the packet and have an opportunity to review and ask questions? All right, moving on, and to the agenda.
Yeah, seek board approval for the revised agenda before you decide. Couple of amendments due to attendance difficulty for guests and then you see some amendments all under section seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, motion carries. Correspondents, Mrs. Lesentine?
Aye.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, correspondence, Mrs. Lesentine?
There is no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Liaison committee updates. Mr. Marshall, would you like to share with us about your committees?
Nothing to report at this point.
Okay. And Mr. Maxa, with your two committees, would you like to report?
Yes, attended the March 8th part four meeting for Dyer. One of the agenda items that was voted on actually is a veterans memorial fundraiser, and there's actually going to be a groundbreaking for the memorial that's going to be in Central Park, and that is supposed to take place on April 15th. The Novakic family is a big part of getting that memorial placed in that park, so they'll be there as well. But it is April 15th, I believe it's 2:00. Yeah, but. So that was one of the things that came out, the marketing items that came out of the part four meeting.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything from redevelopment?
Yes, on the redevelopment side, the March 9th meeting, the very following day, one of the items that came out of that is they decided on a new fence for along Calumet Avenue from Route 30 all the way up to Main Street. That is going to be replaced right now, it's a poly fence, that's going to be replaced with something they call, which looks like concrete, but it's called chisel cream, I believe it's sort of a poly blend, but it looks like a kind, like a stone wall. So they voted on that and that's chosen, and that will start to take place over the next probably six months to a year, replacing that fence along Calumet Avenue. One of the other things that came out of it is they're doing a bison for public artwork, and what that is, is I believe there's going to be a bison, you know, how Cat, Cat Point had the Bulldogs, I think there's going to be a bison right on the corner of Calumet and Hart Street, right there where the drug stores, the CBS, and I think they might be coming to Lake Central to ask for artwork or start some sort of like program or something of that sort to develop a design for that bison. So you might, Larry, you might be hearing from Dyer pretty soon on that. And that's all, that's all I had for redevelopment.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And Mrs. Sues?
I have nothing to report.
All right. And Mrs. Lesentine?
Nothing to report this time.
And Lake Central Education Foundation is here tonight, so we will be hearing from the board. Dr. Slade committee, I think I'm going to defer to Dr. Bracco because he has some information, I believe, or Mr. James does, and his information. And the wellness committee, we're just still moving ahead, and Dr. Bracco will address that a little bit in his school board, or his presentation.
All right, thank you all for sharing, and we go to official school board business topics. Dr. Bracco.
Okay, so for our first item, I'd like to introduce Melody Wolfe. And is the lady here this evening?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah. See, before you come up, we need, we need verbal for the minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, okay. It's been a long day.
Yes. It has. All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now, this is the approval of the minutes and the approval of the claims payable and extracurricular expenditures. I just had a question, Mr. James, Pathfinders with Munster?
It's with Schooltown of Highland, not Munster.
Oh.
And.
Oh, okay.
Larry, do you want to talk about the Pathfinder?
It's a.
Pathfinder Academy, it's the.
Alternative school.
Alternative school.
Okay, alternative school, okay. I knew the term and I just couldn't remember, so thank you.
Yeah, but Schooltown of Highland, we pay them, the agreement was originally for $100,000 a year. We paid them $50,000 the first installment, but then they keep track of all the expenditures and that, whatever that balances that they have in the account goes into factor of what we pay in the second payment. So usually the second payment is not $50,000. It is, is maybe about half of that, depending on how the program is running. So, but this is the first installment for this year.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions now, any others? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Now, Dr. Bracco.
Now, let's ask our representatives from the Education Foundation to come forward to present some grants.
Yeah. Woo! Congratulations.
Today, we're presenting 12 grants for a total of $5,176, and these grants will impact 5,166 students. So as you can see, you get a lot of bang for your buck. So Melody, you want to start presenting?
You want to come to Michelle Tyler's grant?
We'll do, we'll do the regular rounds.
Regular rounds? Okay, we'll go with that. First, we need to introduce Mrs. Melody Wolfe. She's the president of the Education Foundation. We have Mike here also, Soljen as the treasurer, so we would thank you for them coming. The first grant goes to Len Puzey. She's a homin for $500. Her title is Kid Ukulele Course 101. Okay? Kids. Fun kids beginning ukulele course from 3rd to 4th, 3rd and 4th graders will benefit from knowing the notations better, learning music while improving their sense of tempo and beat with the ukulele she's purchasing.
I'm so excited.
I'll show that. Now, Allison's, she's from Clark. Whole Holocaust Literature Study Picture Books and More for about $456. By incorporating picture books into the classroom during her Holocaust study, I can introduce new college, new topics in my curriculum, help students develop non-picture literature skills, provide authentic and meaningful culture perspectives, and meet the needs of the wide-range learners in our classroom. So. Good. Mrs. Kelly Devias. Kelly's from Piper, and hers is STEMS and Stories for $451. STEM kits will invite kindergarten students to engage in learning activities and solve problems by building, creating, experiencing, and using critical thinking skills. So, good job, Kelly. And Melanie Bates is from Prossman. First grade reading centers for $428. The center will help in, excuse me, for reading centers, that's what it's for. These centers will help enrich students in reading, phonics, and language art skill daily. So, I think we'll become good friends now. And Jennifer Zolman. Jennifer's grant is called Read Tool. Okay? Students will be employing STEM and proper, students will be employing STEM cooperatively using problem-solving strategies to design and construct various devices, using these, the knowledge of their sciences to run labs and answer questions pertaining to different fields of study. And, okay, Ms. Talon?
Our seventh grant tonight.
Come on over this way so they can see you.
But we're, we're practicing a new setup in our room, so we're still learning. This is all brackets.
Yes, it is, so thank you.
Okay, this is good, eh? That's. Okay. Mark, this is Mark. Okay, Sue Spicer, grant number seven. Having a field to practice robotics would help the students learn about robotics, experience robotic competition, and teach other students how to use a robot.
Right on the line. Very good. Very good. Congratulations.
Okay, our eighth grant goes to Mickey Zola. Mickey's from Piper, and students will read animal books at their reading level and complete a research report based on their animal interest to present to their peers. Congratulations on your animal research grant, $500. I'm a little biased on this one. Eric Bishon and Sean Bagley High School. A little bit. It's observing a total solar eclipse. The Lake Central High School student body, 3,000 and some kids, will be able to witness a total solar eclipse on August 21st, 2017, using filter glasses funded by this grant. So congratulations.
Very cool. And Tracy Capozzi from Piper.
Second grade sleuths for $195.10. The goal of the second grade sleuths is for all students in the second grade classroom to be exposed to and read the mystery of John Ray as differentiating reading levels and to become expert detail with reading strategies used to navigate through a mystery book. Congratulations.
Our next round of grants, for those of you that didn't have the pleasure of knowing Michelle Tyler, she was a teacher at Clark Middle School. She passed away January 2016. There are many of us who Michelle touched our lives, and even though she's not with us, her love of reading legacy continues, not only among those whose life she touched, but among those who will benefit from the Michelle Tyler Reading Grants. We'd like to thank our donors, especially her husband, Steve Tyler, who allowed the foundation to provide grants to teachers who will continue Michelle's love of reading legacy. So here to present round number two of the Michelle Tyler Reading Grants is Steve Tyler. Thanks for being with us.
That's on the right page.
Allison Welsh.
Here's the Oscars. This works much better if you read the right names. Allison Welsh from Kayla. And our second grantee is Denise Schneider from Clark. Is Denise here? My congratulations to you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if the teachers that are here that received a grant, if you could meet us outside so that we could take a photo? Thank you. You've got to come through.
Okay.
Do you guys have to reach out?
Yeah, we do. Well, I think that what we want to do is, first of all, thanks, thank you, the Education Foundation, for all your support of our students. And actually, this last Saturday, we had a very successful Science Olympia team, teams, and many of it happened because of the support of the Education Foundation. Am I right? Yeah. Yeah. So is George going to say a few words?
We hold study because he's Miss George.
Oh, no. Did you want to say anything, Mary Jo, or Jennifer Zolman, your teacher from Kayler, also? Did you want to say anything to the board about?
I just, this year's been absolutely unbelievable. I appreciate everything you've done, we've done, I will never do this again, I promise you. We did eight competitions in eight weekends in a row, and I understand what happens every weekend. As a coach, I have to make a task, and then we have to make a schedule, the kids go compete, and then you start the process over again. So we didn't know if we were coming or going. You heard at the end of last year, we went to Wright State University, and the ultimate compliment there was going in the first time in a true invitation, and we were invited to go, and not expecting to really do anything but mid-range, and the kid placed 13th. And that wasn't the best for the kids put together. This weekend, the high school team for the first time ever placed third, missing second by eight points, but the good news is we beat Carmel. But each year, you know what these kids wind up doing, and give them the time. The neat part this year was the middle school kids were down there, and Kayla is very, very close to being up on the stage, which we did the figure system, the first time, all three middle schools and the high school kids go, and as part of the club, they are responsible for helping our middle schools. So STEM education is very much on the rise, and a lot of people down the stage is really aware of what's going on with the shared interest of the high schools. Because of your support, I want to thank you very much.
Well, Education Foundation.
And we went to Royal Academy in Volnet, and there were 49 teams, and again, I didn't expect a place, and the only two teams at Ebus was Adam Stevenson and Trier. They both been to, and we placed third. And then there was everybody else underneath of us, so that was very gratifying as well.
Well, and you got to tell them the story about the white bus and the girl crying.
The best thing is driving around that white bus, is you never have to look at all these other school corporations. So we pulled in, and we get out of these competitions, and kids are starting, they're nervous, so they don't eat, and we went into the restaurant, and they cried, because you don't really do it if you walk in. So as we were getting ready to go, and I could hear the manager saying, get out there, clean the table, get out there, get something done, and the kids, no, they represent. So that, that place was clean, and they put the tables back, the chairs, and she started crying, and I walked out, and I looked, and she went back, and I heard the manager, I don't care, stop crying, be out there. And she goes, no, no, it's clean, it's beautiful. That white bus, it's beautiful. So it was really kind of neat that they know who we are, and the same thing happened when we were down the stage and shake down the mark as well, and they were just amazed at what the kids did, so.
That's awesome. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Education Foundation, because they funded a lot of special events for.
We're looking forward to your 2018 Invitational and helping you make that successful, January 2018, so.
Because of what, I mean, we're already, I'm expect, I hope the way they all, I can choose, I'm in this room, and anybody's coming up to help me. I'm truly expecting a lot of.
Thank you, if anybody bought a mattress in November when we had the mattress fundraiser, because we were able to give the Science Olympia team 75% of the proceeds for their Invitational in 2018. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you. We're. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. And moving on to the dual credit dilemma.
So I wanted to give the board an update on this. I presented on this issue back in October, and as you recall, the issue is that the Higher Learning Commission issued guidelines last fall requiring that our dual-credit teachers, including those who are already teaching dual-credit, in order to keep teaching dual-credit, will need to receive a master's degree and have 18 advanced credits in their subject area. There are a few exceptions for career and tech ed classes, like our vocational programs that we have at Lake Central. Indiana is one of 19 states governed by this Higher Learning Commission, and there, the problem is that we don't have very many people who are currently qualified. And the other real problem is that we don't have a lot of ways to incentivize people to go back and do this extra work, even though we know that our students, when they're exposed to rigorous curriculum in high school, they are able to be successful in college and they make it through, they finish. I continue to ask the people in charge, what makes the teaching assistant better than the 20-year veteran high school teacher, or even a good six-year veteran high school teacher? But the Higher Learning Commission does not want to discuss this. They use the argument that professors supervise the teaching assistants, even though it might be the first time they've ever taught the course. Since October 2050, some things have changed. They did give us an extension, so our current instructors can continue to teach and students continue to earn these dual credits through September 1st of 2022. The real wrinkle came in last month when Purdue Northwest, and that's a combination of Purdue Cal and Purdue North Central, for those of you that don't know, said, we're going to self-impose a deadline of September 1st of '19, so we're going to only give people essentially a year and a half to complete this, which is darn near impossible for people to do unless they're pretty darn close already. And so I just wanted to, for sure, update the board that, you know, members of the Ready Northwest Indiana group have already met with Representative Beening, Senators Cruz and Kenley on this. In April, they're going back down to meet with Teresa Lovers, former state senator and current Indiana Commissioner for Higher Education, to say, listen, we got to have some relief here. There are a lot of students who are being very successful in college because we gave them this exposure to rigorous curriculum. I want to share with the board real quick our dual-credit history. 2008, '09, we gave 200 dual credits. 2009, '10, 909. 2010, '11, 800. 2011, '12, a big jump to 4,200. Backed down a little bit in '12, '13, and this past year, we gave 4,623 dual credits at Lake Central High School. The impact of losing Purdue Northwest is important. 2000, and we only have data from where these credits came from, from 2011, but 2011, '12, 1,554 out of 4,200 credits earned were Purdue Northwest, which up until this year was, you know, they were separate, part of it was Purdue Cal, part of it was Purdue North Central. This past year, 1,482 out of the 4,600 were the Purdue two universities. So it's going to hurt us in another couple of years if we don't find somebody else to sponsor those courses, but the real problem is sitting out there staring us in the face for 2022. I think it's important to look at statewide, what, what is the lack of credentials? The number of people who are totally qualified currently in the state of Indiana is 26.2% of the teachers who are teaching dual-credit. But the Department of Ed has repeatedly shared at meetings that I've attended that a high percentage of those fully qualified staff are very near retirement. So that creates a separate problem. So we need to come up with some ways to help teachers meet the new requirements, we need to work with higher ed to create credentialing pathways, we need them to create master's programs, and if there is a master's program in administration or something else that people are choosing to pursue, that they embed these 18 credit hours and make it part of that master's degree. We need to build incentives to reward teachers. Current level of state funding will not allow us to accomplish the task. And philosophically, really, school districts across the state are going to have to start addressing this whole supply and demand issue of teachers who are teaching more rigorous things that require greater levels of certification, and we got to figure out a way to look at things differently in the future. Other potential solutions, you know, some people are talking about paying for the graduate work, but that, to me, is not the best because that, that doesn't keep anybody in place. You could pay for them to get their degree, and then they leave. Probably what would be better is to pay stipends for people who are teaching the courses, and hopefully the piece of legislation that Sheila Kleeker has put forward from Lafayette to reinstitute the master's degree automatic bump will continue to make its way through the Senate. She was, she's a representative, so it came out of the House side, but we'll see where that goes. We need to be able to include graduate work as part of performance reviews. We need to be able to include graduate work as part of performance reviews. Some people talked about possibly sharing dual-credit teachers, which could possibly help in some rare areas, but still not the same as being in a classroom with somebody who can show you a different way, when they can tell by the look on your face that you're puzzled versus when you're taking that course over the computer. State-level potential solutions? We need to advocate with the legislature for funding for school districts to incentivize teachers to pursue this work. We need these dual credits. We need our AP classes to continue to prepare our kids for a tougher and tougher collegiate experience. And we also need to advocate with our legislature to have them loosen up the laws regarding how we pay people. We need more freedom to be able to better reward the people who are doing more to help our kids, not to downplay any of the other coursework. But when someone has to go out and do this extra stuff, I think that the best way to get them to pursue that certification is to reward them in some way, because pay still does matter. The sad part for me is that there's no legislation currently out there in this session to address this issue. And yet, we've been talking about it for quite a while. So it is something that we're going to have to keep at the forefront of people, because Indiana code says that each school must provide at least two dual credits and at least two AP courses. Well, there's nobody to teach them, and you can't even meet the code. And it won't just be a Lake Central problem, this is a statewide issue. So it's going to continue to be a problem. We still have the issue, you know, with less than 1% raise for 2017, 2018. So we still have a lot of work to do with General Assembly, and to continue to talk to them about some of the things that they recognize are important, because they passed a law that said, "We want you to do this. In fact, we compel you to do this." And now that it's becoming an issue, no one seems to want to help us address the issue. I think they believe that we have been really good at problem-solving in the past, and that we'll figure some way out to do this. But this is a pretty complicated matter. And I do think, I'm thankful for the Ready Group for going down and talking to some major players in this area. And let's hope that they can light a fire under a couple of those guys that have pretty good power in the General Assembly, so that they will try to do something. So just wanted to update the board on this. We can certainly take any questions tonight, or continue to talk about it as we move into the future.
Do we have, you say, as a benefit retire, it's a problem. Do we have anyone to share? Do we have either 10 or 12 retiring to share that, you know, that are teaching dual-credit right now? That we're going to be.
No, we don't have that many high school teachers retiring. I only have a couple. But statewide, you know, they have the demographic data on the 26.2%. And they won't share it, because, you know, I don't want to be that specific. But they're saying a good percentage of them are over 55. So, you know, they have a shorter shelf life.
Any other questions?
Are the colleges willing to step up for this distance learning deal? Are they willing to offer the podcasts and let schools livestream it, and we put our teachers who are in there currently there to ask or to answer questions? Are they willing to do anything?
I haven't heard anything, maybe Sarah, I haven't heard anything of those kinds of solutions. I think what they want to get out of Mrs. Lessentina is the $25 per credit. They feel like they're leaving way too much on the table, and they might be. And that may be too low. So if it really is a money thing, maybe they could, you know, raise that number without making it ridiculous, because we're doing all the work. But, you know, maybe there is a price point at which that's not so, they don't find it so offensive.
Did you have anything to add, Mrs. Lessentina?
No, Dr. Brock and I attended the same session on the dual-credit situation in Indiana. I mean, it was nice to see that there were several players from higher ed who came to the table of Ready Northwest Indiana. And even if it sometimes wasn't information we wanted to hear, we're transparent about where they're different schools were at, whether it was Purdue Northwest, or Ivy Tech, or IU Northwest. Something needs to be done.
Karen?
With the financial woes of higher education, case in point, St. Joe's, Dona Restleer, other schools. Dr. Brocko, is this a continuing tug-of-war between higher education and the secondary level in terms of the dual-credit issue? The more dual-credit students go into the college with, the less money they get?
Well, you know, I think they got accustomed to having students for five or six years for a while. And they complain about having to remediate students who are freshmen. But those are all, those courses are all taught by TAs. They really are cash cows for the universities. So now, if kids are coming in with a semester, or even a semester and a half under their belt, they're, generally speaking, most of them are doing a dual major. They're still getting them for four years. But they just see it as a lost revenue. They should be looking at it very differently, because they guarantee their retention rate, which you know, the deans of those different schools have a lot of pressure on them now to retain students, to not have such a high dropout rate. When I went to school, they said, "Here it is, if you don't make it." They grind you through. They had one cap courses, freshman and sophomore years, in physics and chemistry and so forth. And they said, "You got to get to us." Now they have, you know, tutoring tables, which they used to have only for athletes, for every kid at the university, because the retention is important. Well, we've really contributed to making that easier for them. And I wish they would recognize that and be a little more visionary on that issue. But there is some truth that some of the students that they're getting are only getting for three or three and a half years, instead of four, or four and a half, or five, or five and a half. And so it really does come down to them having to recruit more frequently, because they don't get to keep the kids as long. But the ones they get, they should be happy, because they are being successful. We know it.
Any other questions, comments? For those of you in the audience, it's kind of a wake-up call when we realize and understand the amount of power that our legislators have over the education system. It's really a sad situation, because many of our legislators really don't know anything about education. It behooves us to be there to communicate to them. And so I want you to know that in the back of the room, back there, on that small table, is a list of all of our legislative reps. Mr., or Dr. Brocko mentioned the ones on the Education Committee. I can't remember who it is. Benny, Cruz, and Kenley. So those would be ones to reach out to. And then, of course, it's important that you reach out to our local legislators, which would be House Lager, Rickney Meyer, and Julie Otop, and Frank Marvan. And the more that we can get the message out that they created a real ugly situation for us, the better the whole situation will be. Maybe we can have a resolution to it before it gets ugly. It's not ugly yet, but it's getting there, isn't it?
Well, it really, it's just going to, it's going to be sort of okay through 2022 when it's just going to go off the cliff. People won't notice anything till then.
So learn us, and now's the time to do it. So we would appreciate your help with that. All right, moving ahead to.
My fourth item is just to let the board know, I did include in your packets a proposal we sent to ISBA for them to consider us making a presentation at their fall conference. I really don't want to present on it tonight. Stuff I've spoken to you before about, but if you have any questions in the future about that, you at least know what we threw out there. So we'll let you know as soon as we hear from them, probably sometime in May.
All right, that would be good. Any questions? All right, moving ahead to Mr. Gendopik.
Thank you, Ben. My first item is to seek your approval for the personnel recommendations that were in your packets.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Thank you.
My second item is, at Dr. Brocko's request, we provided, maybe about a month or so ago, all of the certified and classified raising increases historical since about 2007. So I provided a spreadsheet here with all the administrative salaries. After everything was implemented this year, which you know is after the evaluation process is over, and then provided you with a comparison of the Crown Point, the Schooltown of Munster, as well as Dune. I do not have all of the data for Marriville in Valparaiso, but when I receive that data, I will also bring that to you. There's a lot of information here, so I would ask that you just review it, and then bring your questions to one of the April board members, and we can discuss the spreadsheet.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and moving on to Director of Primary Education.
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval of the professional leave requests that were included in your packet.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. And my last item is just to give you an update of the kindergarten parent workshop that was held at Holman last Tuesday. It is for all incoming kindergarten parents. We invite them to, and we have the initial meeting, parent meeting. We had 70 parents attend, which is a little less than we normally do. But if you recall, last Tuesday was the two inches of snow that kind of threw the region into a tizzy. So we actually thought that was pretty good attendance, considering the weather was not cooperating. What the evening is, it's organized by Mrs. Tucker. And we had teachers Kim Yalich, Kelly Tobias, and Trish Dice. They go over preparing your child to start kindergarten in the fall. And then they share activities and games that involve math and literacy activities. We send parents home with a packet that have the directions to all of those activities, and some additional ones, some websites that they can go to. And as they were leaving, we asked them to complete a survey, and those results were all positive. And we did have one, we always ask for suggestions, how we can make it better. We did have one parent that suggested us doing Facebook Live, so that people that couldn't attend could see it. So we'll consider that for next year.
There you go.
I thought they were going to say some sort of snacks or food.
Okay, any questions? Thank you for that information. Thank you. And Director of Secondary Education.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the professional leave request and revise copy that you received this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have, and there's a new packet at our table, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Really look forward to hearing how the students do at the Washington University Chemistry Tournament. If you would give us a report on that after that happens, that would be great.
Of course, I can ask Mr. Smith for you to write something up or press.
Perfect, all right.
For my second item, I am seeking your approval for the field trip request as presented.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. For my third item, it is an information item. This is the list of the 2017 summer athletic camps that our athletic department will be offering. So then, all that information will get pushed out to the students in our district and members of the community. There is some slight variation in cost, that all depends on the number of staff at the camp. It depends on the time and number of days of the week that it's going to take place over. Also depending upon food, or t-shirts, or things like that that they might give out. But what the athletic department tries to do is, you know, 50% of the cost is covering all those different items. And it can also include things like for the golf, the green fees, which can escalate from year to year, depending on where they go. And then 50% goes back to that particular sporting group's funds to help fund activities. Any questions on that?
Okay, no questions?
Thank you.
And for my last item, I give you all a sheet this evening, just to give you an update on our Lilly Counseling Grant. We're still working through our planning grant. We had our first work team meeting on March 2nd. At that time, we took a look at our current school counseling model, looking at some of the programs that we offer at both the middle and high school level, as well as our student-to-counselor ratio. We then took a look at how our model compared to the American School Counselor Association national model, and the best practices that they have associated with that model. We reviewed our initial needs assessment, which was sent out to representatives from the three middle schools, as well as the high school. That included some of the counselors, some of the administrators, some teachers, and a couple of parents. And that gave us our initial data point. Thank you to Mrs. Lessentina and Ms. Suez for taking the time to fill that survey out. It was a little bit of a lengthier one. And then, we talked a little bit about the counseling workshop, which took place on March 13th and 14th. That was attended by myself, our Director of Guidance, and one of the high school counselors. This was put on by the Indiana Youth Institute, which is the consultant that we're using as part of the grant work. And the presentations there focused on best practices, as well as guidance on implementation, planning for grants, and also some of the things that Lilly would be looking at when they reviewed our grants. They also went through some of the research on some of the topics that they use and school districts were looking at, as well as some of the resources we might pull towards our grant as well. We did have a work team meeting then, the day after we got back from that, and reviewed a lot of data. We've been gathering a bunch of data on our demographics, because one thing that Lilly is very particular about is that the grant be very specific and compelling. And the way we make it compelling is by having the data to back that up. So we looked at the results of our counseling surveys, which were taken by students, parents, and staff. We've talked with our consultants, Dr. Joyce Brown and Regina Manley out of Illinois, about the results. And we're sort of feeling at this point that our priority area is going to be the transition process, how students move into middle school from fourth and fifth grade, how they transition from middle school into high school, eighth to ninth grade, and then how they transition out of Lake Central from 12th grade into the post-secondary role, whichever pathway they might choose. And so we're trying to kind of look at putting together a more systemic approach, looking at our data and some of the feedback we received. I think we're great at responsive services, but we were more proactive. We had a more cohesive program across the three middle schools, and then lining up at the high school, that that could maybe prevent us from being as reactive and more proactive. We attended a Lilly Grant workshop on March 16th that was sponsored by the Service Center. That was attended by one of our middle school counselors, a high school counselor, our Director of Guidance, and myself. And at that meeting, I, why I shared a template where they sort of gave us some information on what Lilly looks for typically in its grants, which is useful, because we're not grant writers, and we don't typically apply to the Lilly Foundation. So it was good to get that guidance from people who regularly work with the Lilly Foundation and have that insight. And then in terms of our upcoming meetings, on Wednesday, March 22nd, we actually kind of have a full day set aside, where we're going to pull a couple of our middle school counselors and a couple of the high school counselors, along with our Director of Guidance, and try to put together our rough draft. In the afternoon then, we're going to get our work team back together that has some parents, some other staff members, Dr. Brocko, some administrators, to kind of look at that draft, because our goal is to get a first draft done by April 7th, and then get our final draft done a couple of weeks before that May 19th deadline, which will allow our consultants to review it, to make sure we're putting the best product forward that we can. On Thursday, April 6th, we actually are doing a site visit to Adely Stevenson. That's what you just approved in my work packet today, to look at some of the best practices they have at that high school. And then, we're possibly going to attend another professional development session on April 12th, but they're still putting that together. Questions? Been a laugher.
I have a question. When you're looking at this planning grant, you're doing a comprehensive, including special needs students, CAP students, compahidna? Okay. I just, okay.
And that'll be part of the transition, is looking at different groups of students and how they're responding to the transition. You know, we're going to look at academics, we're going to look at attendance, we're going to look at behavior. And then that also will be the metrics with which we evaluate our program, should we get the grant. Are we improving in those areas, so our students are being more successful, no matter which program they're in?
That's really very good, very good. Because I hear so many concerns expressed about the transition. So I think tightening that up, communicating well is a good plan. Any other questions or comments?
Sir, you might have mentioned this in a previous meeting. How much is that grant for?
So the planning grant we have right now is $50,000, just supporting the consultants and some other things that we need to get done, as well as attending some of these workshops. And then the implementation grant can be up to $100 per student. But before we get super excited about that, they've already taken $9 million out for the planning grants. So there's 13 million left. So honestly, in speaking with Dr. Brocko, we've decided that maybe the better bet is to aim around, you know, the 400,000-type area over the four years. So that way, we have probably more likelihood of getting the grant.
So who took the millions of dollars out? Lilly? They just decreased the amount of the grant?
No, well, because our district, along with many other districts throughout the state, got the planning grants. So when you add all the $30,000 planning grants.
You had less left over, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, and. Okay, and moving on to Director of Special Ed.
I do not have anything on my agenda tonight. We had, we are actually hosting a professional development session on Thursday and Friday in the LAMP protocol, which is Language Acquisition and Motor Planning, assistive technology for students with significant speech impairments. Because we are hosting, we have ten free slots, so my professional leave was for someone that was going to pay to attend, and we ended up being able to swap them out with someone else who couldn't. So that is was my, the reason my agenda item was removed. But in response to a request from Dr. Malcow, in our April meetings, I'll be providing information on both our transition to adulthood program and also our classrooms at Companion Academy. So we'll be hearing about that moving forward.
That'll be good. Thank you. All right, and Director of Facilities.
Thank you. Just a quick update tonight on some good news. We have obtained building permits for Salt Stories Barn for the town of St. John. NIPSCO is scheduled to be out there this week to relocate some utilities, and we hope to start earnest there over spring break.
And we're still working on the sign, correct? That's still on the agenda?
That's, we will be going in April to the DZA meeting. Dr. Rocco, I will be attending the April DZA meeting.
And what date is that again, sir?
I believe it's April 24th.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And moving on to, any other questions, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. James?
Thank you. My first item is to talk to the board about the 2017 tax rates. At your station, I led you two handouts, one is a little bit of original analysis, and then I have a staple copy with some data and some charts and graphs in there. Just in summary, the Department of Work and Development Finance has certified the tax rates for the 2016, paid 2017, but even though the tax bills have not been sent out by the county yet, I have obtained the taxing rate for each taxing district from the county auditor's office, and so I was still able to do my annual analysis for you. Just in summary, for the Lake Central School Corporation, as you know, the tax rates are based on the assessed valuation of all the properties in our district. Our AV dropped approximately twenty-seven million dollars from last year for all the properties in the district. However, as you know, we have the TIP districts that are affluent in the tri-town area, and the value of the gross AV, which includes the TIP districts, that actually increased almost three and a half million dollars from last year to this year. So, when you actually look at it, the value of the TIPS went up about thirty million dollars from last year to this year, but unfortunately, that doesn't get rolled into the taxes, and we get hurt a little bit by that. So overall, like I said, our total AV that the tax bills are based on went down by twenty-seven million dollars. The tax rate for Lake School, Lake Central School Corporation actually decreased. Last year, we were at seventy-nine point seven three cents, and this year, we are going to be at seventy-eight point ninety-two cents. As you can see from the handout on that first page, I, there are sixteen school districts in Lake County, and we are third from the bottom in the tax rate. Whiting and East Chicago are below us. Whiting is a one-building school district, and East Chicago has a decreasing population, but we're very proud of our low tax rate here at Lake Central of just under seventy-nine cents. The second page of that handout is the same data, but just a more in a graph form. The green line going across indicates what the average tax rate is of the sixteen, and then where we rank among the other school districts in the county. You know, just to know, people in this area often compare ourselves to Munster and Crown Point, and just to know that our Lake Central rate is forty-three percent lower than the average tax rate for the schools in Lake County. The Crown Point and Munster rates are just about seventy-four percent higher than our rate, so again, we take pride in keeping a low rate for our taxpayers. But as you know, your tax bill is not just based on the school tax rate, there's the county, there's the town, there's the library, and other special districts, and that's really what people are concerned about, what's the bottom line, what's my tax bill going to be? There are actually forty-nine different taxing combinations in Lake County. You know, we have straight up Sherrville, and Dyer, and St. John, and Incorporated, but you also have little niches where it could be, for example, we have a little niche in Griffith, which is the town of Griffith, the Lake Central Schools, and other combinations. We have the same thing with Crown Point and whatnot. So, if you throw all those little oddities out, there's approximately nineteen cities and towns proper in the county. And if you look at the following pages, I do an analysis of those, and Dyer, St. John, and Sherrville, I have three of the four lowest rates of all the communities in Lake County. Again, we're really proud of that. So the average tax rate for Dyer, St. John, and Sherrville together is two dollars and twenty-seven point, or two dollars twenty-seven point seven cents, again, for the average of the three. The, that two point two seven is thirty-six percent lower than the average tax rate of, which is over three dollars and fifty-four cents. So, and again, on those two subsequent pages, I also put that in a line graph, so you can see where we compare to the other communities throughout the county. Again, as I said, the two communities, as mentioned earlier, Crown Point is about thirty-one percent higher, and Munster is fifty-four percent higher than that. What I've done, and I'm not going to go into all the details on the last four pages, but I think this is important for people who are looking to move to the area from Illinois or wherever, and they're choosing different communities to, you know, to where they want to potentially want to buy. So, what I've done is a kind of a tax bill analysis of different home values. On the first page is for a home assessed at one hundred thousand, and I had two hundred thousand, three hundred, and four thousand on the subsequent pages, and what those persons' tax bills would be if they lived in Sherrville, St. John, Dyer, and I also include, included Maryville, Crown Point, Griffith, and Munster, and what that is. Because in essence, a two hundred thousand dollar home is a two hundred thousand dollar home, and whether or not it's sitting in Sherrville is going to be a different tax bill than if it's in Maryville, or Griffith, or Crown Point, or Munster. And you can see from those charts how much more those bills would be living in those other communities, and what percentage higher it would be for us, for someone there as well. Just to know, these are just estimates, tax bills, don't hold me to it because tax bills are not out yet. This analysis does presume that someone has a homestead deduction, they have, and they have the mortgage deduction, which is the most, two most popular deductions that are out there. If someone had a veteran's or was over age sixty-five, that would change these as well. Additionally, the second to the last line on that analysis are the property tax credits. This was based on the form of last year. It's usually pretty consistent from year to year, however, since the tax bills aren't out yet, I haven't been able to verify those. But you can play with those numbers and look to see where your personal home values may be, and you'll get a pretty good estimate of what your tax bill's going to be here anytime that the county sends it out. So, any question on any of that? And last year, when we met with the, we had the Realtors come in that we put together, we did share this information with them, and we will do that again this year if we're doing the same thing.
I was just wondering, are you doing the meeting with our Realtors again this year?
We haven't put that together yet. So we made it with the late spring, early.
I think you had a lot of good, positive results from that, didn't you?
Yeah, the information you provided was critical for them, and, you know, we were the first ones to do it, and it helps them a great deal as they're driving around and showing folks different property and what the tax rate would be, and how it impacts financial budget.
I know, because it's very important as we look down the road and see where we're headed and all that, so very important. Thank you, Mr. James.
Okay, my second item is to give the board an update on House Bill 1009, which is now on the Senate side. If you recall, when we met with our three legislators on March 3rd, this bill was one of them that came up. This, to refresh your memory, is the bill that, on the surface, looks as if it would replace the School General Fund with what's called the New Education Fund, and then combine our capital projects, transportation, and bus replacement funds into a new Operations Fund. As we discussed at that meeting on March 3rd, once I dove into the bill, I had some concerns that, in addition to those original three funds, there were about eighty-some other funds that also were going to be eliminated, including school lunch, textbook rental, our self-insurance health funds, rainy day, and all those balances were going to be combined into one of these operations funds. I didn't understand the reasoning for it, and I expressed those concerns to our legislators in a lengthy email at the beginning of last week, per their request from when we met with them, because I think when we met with them, I got the impression that they were not aware of all those fine details in there, and wanted us to provide them as much information as possible. So I did that last week. I also included my ASBO Executive Director, Denny Casterson, on that email, just to make him aware of my concerns here at Lake Central. That same afternoon, I got a response from Denny that said that he had the exact same concerns as I had, and that he has been working diligently with the Senate Appropriations Committee, and they're looking at drafting language to take all those other seventy-eight or eighty-some funds off, out of this bill, and still keep it just to the core of the CPF, transportation, and bus. So our rainy day fund, our self-insurance fund, school lunch, textbook rental fund would not be affected. Now, of course, he's working on that, hoping, the plan was to have some sort of amendment to the Senate version of the bill, but he feels, I actually was with Denny out Thursday and Friday last week, he's positive, not positive, he's feeling good that that amendment will be presented, but you never know what the legislators will do, and if they will fully, you know, accept anything. So we are keeping a close tab on that. I just really feel that schools are being targeted for an unnecessary reason, and it makes me a little concerned if there was some other hidden agenda here. So, and maybe there's not, maybe they were just trying to clean things up, you know, I don't know, I'm not going to speculate. So, we'll see how that goes, but again, we're watching it closely, but it looks like things are in motion to maybe make this not so bad for us, so. Any questions on that?
Hope we get your response, sir.
I hope so, we'll see. Okay, and my final item is to seek your approval on a variety of donations. First, the high school boys and girls swim teams, each received a donation of five hundred dollars from the Barracudas. The Tri Kappa Zeta Pi chapter is donating twenty-four hundred dollars to the Lake Central Fine Arts Festival that is being held on April 3rd. Holman Elementary School received twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents, and Coling Elementary received twenty-five dollars and seven cents from Brett Robin. Vivage Elementary School received a donation of sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents from the Wells Fargo matching gifts program. On the given side, Kayler Middle School recently held a fundraiser for Riley Children's Hospital, and they'd like to donate one thousand seventy-five dollars to Riley's for the net profits from that fundraiser. And then Holman Elementary recently held a jump rope for heart program, and they would like to donate the four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents raised to the American Heart Association. So I seek your approval on those donations received, and to be get some.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, we're at the point in our agenda where we have public comments, and we have a few tonight, so as I announce your name, if you would step forward to the podium, announce your name and your address, and we try to limit our comments to three minutes each, please. And so, Louise Taylor.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I will go quickly. As a Lake Central resident, employee, and fan, I come to you this evening wearing all of those hats, as you well know. First of all, thank you for your support of the educational design that helped to make our students well-rounded. Contributing citizens, you have supported the curriculum elected programs that are in conjunction with CTE, work-based learning, Project Lead the Way, and Family and Consumer Sciences. Obviously, that's one that I'm interested in. All of those things help, and you have seen some of the effects of that, like at our last board meeting, it was pretty cool to see how work-based learning has come into play. Also, thank you, it is from Family-Based Enterprises, you all have addressed, especially Al, thank you, the number one chart, which is safety. The "I love you guys" school safety programs started because of family loss, huge family loss, and family strength, interpersonal relationships, and strong belief that kids should be safe at school. Their mission, helping kids, helping schools, and helping community, that's their mission. Each of these items affect me as a resident, and I want to thank all of you, and also all the staff that have worked with Al, to bring that together. You make sure that this program is a central part of our community culture. It's gone out to a tri-town area, that is amazing. And it started from a family-based concern. Third, Your Choice Prevention Education, also a family-based endeavor that grew out of family challenges and the commitment of that family to apply families' family principles that were very strong. The Stairway to Heroin, the Wake Up Call, and From Playground to Pills programming curriculum is based on human development and how to keep families healthy, the family wellness. Their mission is to reach youth before drugs do. They speak directly to families. It is from healthy families, we have healthy communities, states, and so goes the governmental structure of our society. So thank all of you very much for supporting curriculum that has to do with families. Our corporation is not just good, it continues to be strong, best, better with programming that helps in developing people and our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and we have Laura Heisman.
My name is Laura Heisman. I have two children, I come to you as a parent. Would you like my address? Okay. I live at 9960 Clark Place in Crown Point. I have two children at Coling currently, and I come to you as one of six women who are able to come here tonight, and mothers of children at Coling, because we are concerned about the school's safety. And what I mean by that is, I don't know if any of you have entered Coling, it is an older building, and when you do enter, you enter directly into the school once you pass the double doors. This is a major issue, because there never seems to be any staff in the office, at least when I go in, and I get let in by other parents. And once you're in, you're in this school, and people tell me like, oh, well, you look like a mom, you look safe. Okay, well, so did probably the other people who come out of schools. So, I know the school is older, and I've emailed people in the district, I've emailed Mrs. Cruz, who kind of like brushes off comments, and I understand her position. However, this is a very serious issue, and I think that something needs to be done. You can't rely on the secretaries to police the people coming in. I feel like you need to do something to prevent people from getting into the building without entering offices. I don't know, you know, the logistics of what needs to happen, but I feel like every day that goes by without a solution is another day that children are at risk, basically. So, I don't know if anyone has suggestions, or if there's anything on the table to do something about Coling, but I would really like to hear it.
Well, would you be willing to talk with our elementary curriculum director?
Oh, yes, a hundred percent.
About this?
Hundred percent.
We can come to some understanding and resolution?
Sure.
So what, can I ask your phone number?
Oh, yes.
I'll write it down.
Oh.
What is your phone number?
It's area code 224, it's thirty-six.
224?
224, yeah. We moved here two years ago. I'm an educator myself, I taught in a district in Elgonquin. And what's funny is, I'm a specialized teacher, my school is a very specialized, this emotional disorder school, only six teachers, and my secretary was such a guard dog at her door, she wouldn't even let my husband in the building. So to go from that to this, we're like, anyone can enter Coling, and, you know, the student classes are, you know.
So very legitimate concern.
It was very eye-opening to me.
Absolutely.
The first time I went to Coling.
Absolutely. So 224?
Yeah, so it's still my phone from, 636.
636?
6152.
6152. All right. I'll give that number to you, okay? Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
And Shannon Swenson?
Hello, I'm Shannon Swenson. I'm also current at Coling. My address is 9611 Triana Lane. And I'm here because I'm not sure, there's a lot of buzz amongst parents, and I'm assuming it's legitimate amongst you guys as well, that Coling is a little bit overcrowded, and there's a possibility of redistricting. And I didn't know who is responsible for making that decision, when the decision is made, and what the options are. Is it just redistricting? Is it modular classrooms?
What we decided earlier this year was not redistricting, but districting. So there's a new neighborhood going in west on 93rd that is, I may get this wrong, like 2.1 miles from Coling, but 2.9 miles from Vivitch. So we decided to put that, since no one lives there yet, that new neighborhood is going to be assigned to Vivitch. So in terms of taking students who currently go to one school and making them, forcing them to go to a different school for next year, that will not happen this year. I can't promise anything in the future. When you have student populations at Pfeiffer and Watson, a little over 400, and you have Coling at 650, you do get into a situation where at some point, you can't go to the taxpayer and say, "We need to add classrooms," when we have empty classrooms.
Right.
I will just tell you, when I moved here, I looked for a neighborhood, not a particular elementary school district, because I think our school, elementary-wise, are very similar with programming, very similar with the quality of staffs. So I wasn't worried about that. But I understand that people don't like to be disrupted, and they, when they start somewhere, they want to finish, and so those kind of things would all be taken into account. But in terms of 1819, I wouldn't make any promises to you or any other parent, but for 1718, you know, things will stay the same. We have another neighborhood that's going in across from Tiburon that we're taking a look at currently. It's 22 acres, and it may be assigned to a different district other than Coling as well. And that decision will probably be made sometime in April.
If, you know how just registration can ebb and flow, and like, say, a huge kindergarten class comes in, is it possible, would you do modular classrooms? I'm concerned about that. I'm not very concerned about redistricting. I don't think I'll be redistricted, but I am concerned about modular classrooms. Is that an option?
Modular classrooms were not very popular the last time we had them.
Yeah.
So you prefer to stay away from that?
Okay.
Especially if we have space. Now, where it gets tricky, of course, is you can't just push everything to Vivitch, because then Vivitch will be busted at this stage.
Right.
So, you know, we've got some things to study, and we have, you know, data, not just guesswork. We've got some information from a demographer, which is a public document, you're welcome to see that if you like as well, to show what the projections are. And he was pretty accurate for the first five or six years, the last time he did this for us. And then it sort of tails off, because, you know, somebody uses a census data, so. But anyway, what I, all I can tell you is, the kindergarten sections, based on early registration, don't indicate that we're going to have a crisis at Coling for 1718, but I won't promise that for 1819.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Mrs. Wada, Jean Wada?
Hi. Jean Wada, 3525, work at Drive and Dyer. I don't know if you're the correct group to be speaking to, but I don't know where else to go. I don't know if you're aware, well, I know that you know that we have science olympics, we had competitions past weekend. I have a student in high school and a student at Kayler, and they both competed on their respective teams. It's a really big-ish, big competition, the kids gear up starting in October, November to work towards this, to qualify it, and to compete, and a lot of work goes into it. Kayler did not have a bus to go. And a request was put in several weeks prior. I don't know what happened between then and this past Saturday, but we have 15-plus students plus all of their projects, materials for their events, their overnight bags, no bus. So Mrs. Olman was lucky enough to get a little 15-passenger van, which she had to take a day off, critical day right before a competition, to learn how to drive that vehicle. Then we had to rent two other vans, so the parents could then drive down with the students and their projects, just to get us to the competition. And then, because of ISMO, she was up late waiting for our kids to come, and then she couldn't really be there for the competition day. Just, it was a lot of stress on her when the kids needed her the most, not to mention the long drive back at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night the night before. So I understand maybe bus drivers were calling off, that they're allowed to call off. I don't know what influence, what you have with the bus farm, but the fact that we had to go to a state competition without any kind of transportation provided to us by Lake Central was just, it was rough on the kids, and rough on Mrs. Olman. I mean, thankfully, she was able to do it, to learn how to drive the bus, and to get her kids down there, so.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Wada. That is something that does concern us, and I know Dr. Bracco's sitting here going, "How did that happen?" So we will check into that and appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then we have, hmm, can you read that? Hell, yes.
Hey, ah, well said, well said. This is just to piggyback off of what Miss Wada added, and first of all, I want to congratulate you on the grant that you've given for the kids. A corporation that prides himself in academics, great to see. However, I am equally disturbed about the bus issue. I've got three children in the system, one is a senior graduating, 4.6 GPA, you know, summa, and a lot of, it was really gratifying to notice and point out the Science Olympiad teachers, Ms. Martin and Ms. Olman, which my son really learned a lot from Ms. Olman, as well as Mr. Smith. I think that's the two teachers he really prides himself. And they go through a lot of effort to go to these competitions. And similar to what Miss Wada said, you know, we have these competitions, the kids gear up, and it was disturbing to know that we have a state meet, this is a state meet. I understand it's not athletics, but a state meet, academics, you know, the youth department of education is pushing STEM, and here we have an opportunity to send our kids down to state, an invitational, and we only take 30-17s. Kayler happened to be one of them. We were lucky enough to get a bus for the high school kids. But for her to drive a bus, you know, 15-passenger, again, saying, as Miss Wada said, had we had all 20 kids go down at the same time, what would have happened? Lucky for enough, there were a lot of parents involved, you know, who try to help out and support the department, and so it was nice to see, we all pitched in, came down. Kids did great, as Ms. Martin said earlier, you know, high school finished third. My son is in eighth grade as well in the middle school, and they all, you know, roll up into the high school and become the, you know, the students that become and do great things. And so, again, it was just disturbing to see that we did not have a bus. Under my understanding is it was reserved in advance. It shouldn't have gotten to that point. We all kind of volunteered and helped out. Sounds like you heard it. I teeter heads now, and so. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address them or concerns.
We know, we know all the procedures were followed, and we'll check into it, of course.
Is it a lack of resources? Is it a union issue? I mean, what can you say?
I don't think it was anything like that. I think it was just a snafu that happened. I've never heard this happen with Lake Central bus transportation, we typically were okay with bus drivers. Now, you left out Friday night.
During the week, it's a, during the week, you can get a problem, but typically Saturdays it's not, so.
Did you left out Friday night, did you?
Yeah, the high school, Friday.
Oh, you do know?
I don't know all the details. I just know that there were different groups leaving at different times, right?
Yeah, the middle school that leave till probably be like two or three after school, or maybe mid.
One of the middle schools left in the morning?
I can't comment, does anybody?
That was my understanding, one of them left in, but somebody else was only taking seven students. There was...
We had, we were taking half of our team, the rest was at ISMO. We left at nine. I drove the van, the bus, because we couldn't get anybody to take us during the day.
And that was, and what was half your team?
Parents had to bring the rest.
What was half your, what was half your team?
Half my team, nine.
Nine?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't have all the details. I just know that, and I was not here late in the week, last week, but some of the issues that the transportation department was having with not enough bus drivers to drive our kids to the normal school route was becoming a problem on that Friday. But I think you guys left later, because I know that one school left in the morning, but then somebody else did.
Well, that's why at early morning, we had a bus, everything went slow.
Right. I think one of the middle schools left in the morning, too.
And credit be due to Ms. Olman, you know, we rolled in probably about 2:00 AM on Saturday, after a full extensive day of competing, you know, having to run around the campus. So we're done and moving.
And then one school, you know, I can't remember all the details without it being in front of me, but didn't one school just qualify just that previous weekend?
Correct.
Clark, Clark competed in the wild card just the Saturday before. They qualified, and they went down as well. They went down at 4:30 in the afternoon on Friday.
Okay.
So we qualified, we took four, put our paperwork in, leave out at nine, so we would be able to go down, walk campus, our children would not get lost. It is a huge campus, a IU. We do it every year so that they are familiar with where they're going, and it just didn't happen. And it was last minute. We didn't get any kind of, anything to the last minute. They told us, they were trying to figure it out. They were getting calls Monday and Tuesday. And Thursday, I was learning how to drive the white bus down at 5:30 at night on Thursday, before I needed to pick it up at 7:30 in the morning on Friday. And I still had my team and stuff that I had to gather.
So as you can tell, I have little bits and pieces of information, but I don't have...
And there's been other competitions, I think, at the high school level, we'll be all pitched in. We've run to three bands, you know, we've run into the competitions as well, so, you know. I know athletics probably gets a higher, higher key of buses, I don't know, I'll just throw it out there, but, you know, when we're trying to sell academics to the children, it'd just be nice to see what we can do to try to pull resources together to try to help the kids.
Well, you have very legitimate concerns, and we thank you for sharing those with us.
I appreciate your time and cooperation.
And Dr. Bracco and Mr. Gondal, we're handling that. I think we have a problem, though. We need more bus drivers, it sounds like, and maybe you shouldn't do so good about these kids, Mary Jo. Program is really moving, huh?
Thank you for recognizing the program and the two teachers, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. We just love what they're doing, so. But we do need more bus drivers, if anybody wants to get their CBL license. All right, thank you for sharing. We apologize for that snafu this past weekend. Four comments in consideration of future agenda topics. Mr. Marshall?
Just a short comment. After the last November elections, we had a change in the board membership, we had a new board member sitting to my immediate left, Cindy Seuss. And I just want to make a short comment. We're a board that's basically, as I view it, in transition. We're working to get together as a strong unit and move forward in this year. Presently, before this meeting, we had an open meeting reviewing all the board policies. We're going through them item by item and discussing, and I think that's a helpful approach. We'll get through it shortly here and get this done. But I'd like to compliment the board and my fellow board members and our administrators for backing us in this regard, and thank everybody for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Seuss, no comments either, same? Mrs. Leszanti?
I always love hearing from people, so of course, I would love to hear from clubs or, you know, admin, any good stuff that we have going on, or any presentations, all that great stuff that our kids are doing and our teachers are doing, so if anyone has items that they can share with us, we would love to hear from them.
Very good. And Mr. Boxer?
I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for, you know, our citizens coming out, our parents coming out and expressing their concerns to us, because sometimes we hear it, sometimes we hear it through the grapevine, sometimes it's not correct, you know? So it's good for you guys to come out and really express your concerns with us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to let everyone know that it's probably a smart move for us to have a summer meeting with our legislators, I'm thinking, to follow up with what's happened in this session and the effects it's going to have on us, so we'll talk about a date on that. I had a conversation the other day with a gentleman, and I didn't really even know him, just out of the blue, he knew I was connected with Lake Central, and he told me that his daughter was attending, I don't know, one of the private schools. Anyway, she left the private school, she came to the high school, Lake Central High School. Had some challenges, just because she's a high school student, and there was one principal that kept her in school and would not let her quit, and walked her through her junior and senior year, and that was Mr. Moore. So he would thank Mr. Moore for just going that extra, extra bit every week, and it's that personal relationship, and she knew someone cared, so she was going to hang in there. I thought that was just outstanding, so thank you for that. And don't forget, April 3rd, we have the art display and the fine arts display down in the, what do you call that?
Library Commons.
Library Commons. All right. And I think it's art and music, if I remember correctly. All right. So that's on April 3rd, before the board meeting. Okay. All right, Dr. Bracco.
Next meeting, April 3rd.
All right.
Same place, same time.
7:30, and we'll do our board policy updates then on the April 17th meeting, so we don't interfere with the art. Okay. I'm ready for adjournment.
Push me to adjourn.
Second. And discussion. All in favor? You need adjourn, thank you.